We're suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Medfield Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. All votes subject to remote participation therefore will be roll call votes. And we have present Select Board members Michael Markucci, Gus Murby, and myself, Oslar Peterson. And I turn it over to you, Mike.
Thanks Pete. We will also open the meeting under that same order from Governor Baker of the School Building Committee. We have with us voting members Mike Quinlan, Tom Herb, Walt Kincaid, Mike Weber, Jeff Marsden, and Mike Markucci. I'm not going to miss anybody. And then also members, Amy Colleran, Steve Granham, Christine Traitor-Wyler, and Mike LaFrancesca. Okay.
Don't forget Bob Slaney, Mike.
Oh, sorry, I missed you. I should have known Bob was here. Sorry, Bob. Thanks. Thanks for calling that out, Mike. I knew this. This is quite a list of panelists here this evening. This was certainly one of the larger ones. But all right, so we have a lot to get through tonight. The main focus of this evening will be on sustainability. We'll be hearing about net zero and some of the analyses that have been slaved over for the last six or eight weeks. And so that's why we're doing a joint meeting with the selectmen as we're seeking guidance from the selectmen on how far we want to pursue net zero and what that means in terms of costs and long-term potential for savings, et cetera. So we have a lot to get through with that. And then we also have some some regular SBC business, which if Pete or Gus want to stick around for, they're welcome to. Otherwise, they will sign off if they'd like. And then I'm also adding, looks like Leo just showed up too. So we have Leo. Okay, so I'll turn it over to Left Field, who will take us through the agenda. And then I believe we'll jump into the presentation.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight is approval of the March 10, 2021 meeting minutes. You should have received them in your meeting packet.
Did anyone have any comments or edits to the meeting minutes as presented?
I just had one, Mike. I wasn't at that meeting and the attendance sheet had me down. I think Gina said she was going to take care of that.
Yeah, Mike, I will take care of that.
Thanks.
And then next on the agenda, we're going to jump right into.
We haven't taken a vote yet.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Trying to rush us along.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Mike Weber's attendance?
So move, Jeff.
All right, I have a motion from Jeff Marsden. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a second from Tom Herb running down the list. Tom Herb.
Yes.
Walt Kincaid.
Yes.
Mike Weber.
I guess, yes.
Yeah, you could say yes or abstain, as long as.
That's fine.
Okay. And Jeff Marsden?
Yes.
And Leo Brown?
I'm going to abstain since I just got here.
Okay. And Mike Markucci?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. And also Mike Quinlan also votes yes. So Lynn, it's back to you.
Okay, we're going to jump right into Air Street's presentation. We're going to start off with the energy and net zero analysis. So I'll turn it over. And can you give them presentation rights, Mike?
They have it.
Okay.
Can everyone see the cover page?
Yep.
So we're going to go through the energy and net zero assessment first. We're going to do a little bit of framing the discussion. We're not going to cover everything that we covered at the community forum a couple of months ago, but we're just going to get a little bit of background. And then we're going to go into the findings of the different assessments and modeling we've been doing over the last two months. And there are some other items on the agenda based on timing. So jumping into the net zero assessment.
So I was going to preface this conversation just to kind of make sure we're all sort of understanding where we are. You know, the reasoning behind this assessment is looking at the overall costs and savings in the different systems that are available. You know, this this committee has already, the SBC has already voted to pursue the additional incentive points from the MSBA, which brings us to a very sustainable building. But still, there's further along the lines of sustainability that that we can go down that do have some additional upfront costs, but some also some longer term benefits. So we're going to go through that tonight. Ultimately, what we're looking for is guidance from the selectmen, and we're not asking you to vote on it tonight. And I think if if there's any questions following up this presentation, we'll make sure to get you answers before you vote on anything. If they're relatively simple, or if we've answered all your questions, we'd be looking for a vote maybe the on Tuesday, the 30th, if there are further questions and it's a little more complicated, we're anticipating, hopefully, we can get you to vote on it by April 6. So that's our ultimate goal and what we're looking for from the selectmen. And then I will turn it back over to Kay and she'll take you through all of our findings.
Great. So what we've been doing for the last almost three months in schematic design is we've been energy modeling all of the different HVAC systems that we're looking at for the project as options. We've been doing an economic engineering assessment, which is a simple cost analysis and operations and maintenance analysis of those systems. We've been making sure that, you know, there is site locations for things that might be required for a net zero project. We've been developing the enclosure and will continue to do that as schematic design progresses and drawings are done. We've gotten revised cost estimates for all of the system options. And then we've done a detailed lifecycle cost assessment that goes beyond the economic engineering assessment and looks at full lifecycle costs and savings of the different options for net zero. And as I mentioned before, in January, we had a community forum where we kind of talked about the background, did some education around net zero. So our schedule, we are here today, we're at the end of March, and we're presenting the detailed lifecycle cost assessment. And as Mike mentioned, we're looking for, based on the schedule, a decision on the net zero piece, the beginning of April, and then an HVAC option can be selected by the SBC. So just putting us all in the same framework, you've seen the slide before, what is net zero? It's an ultra-low EUI building. That means a building that uses very little energy and that energy is offset on an annual basis by renewable energy. Renewable energy production can be onsite, can be offsite. For this assessment, we're looking at onsite because of the opportunity to be able to put that on the site as opposed to a dense urban site. There are a lot of different benefits of a high performing and net zero building, educational benefits, health benefits, both indoors to the building as well as exterior. There are cost benefits as well. So setting the energy target, how do you know what an ultra-low EUI building is? And what is the minimum requirement that a building would need to have to meet the MSBA requirements? So the MSBA requirement doesn't specifically use EUI, that's energy use intensity. It's how we measure the amount of energy per square foot a building uses. And we can then compare similar buildings such as an elementary school to another elementary school. MSBA doesn't use that specific metric, but their equivalency is around 30, so it could be a little bit higher. It probably isn't a little bit lower. It's right around 30. And then what is a net zero building? There is a national definition from the New Buildings Institute, which is an EUI of 28 in our region for a school. And then there is ever-source incentive path that they have that requires an EUI of 25 or less. So as by definition, any building that's 28 or less could be considered net zero. And again, our sort of minimum requirement for this project for the MSBA is around 30 or a little bit lower is better. So again, these are the same four systems that we've been talking about for the last year that are appropriate for a school building. On the left, you have our base design, which is a gas system. We have an all-electric system that is very similar to the gas. And then we have two options that could be net zero, they can get to that 28 or less EUI. So the first two systems are very similar. They have heat pump chillers and boilers. The only difference is that one has a gas boiler, one has an electric boiler. The third option is ground source heat pumps, and it's very similar to option two, but instead of using the air as a heat exchange for the heat pumps, it's using the ground. The ground is much more efficient because the temperature swings in the ground are not as high as the temperature swings outside in the air. These three systems all use displacement ventilation. Talk about what that means in a minute. And the fourth system is a VRF system. It is small rooftop units that are VRF, which is variable refrigerant flow. That's what that stands for. And these small units serve multiple rooms, and they provide ventilation and overhead. So typical diffusers you might see in a ceiling grid, that's the type of ventilation that is associated with that system. So just some diagrams to visualize these three systems. This is system one and two. You can see that the heating and cooling, hot water and chilled water is being provided through a heat pump on the roof and a boiler that would be inside the building, and it would be gas or electric depending on which option. And then there's an air handling unit that will supply ventilation air through displacement, which is supplying low along the wall. And we'll talk about that in a second. And then there's radiant heating and cooling depending on what season it is, or if it's a swimming season along the perimeter. As I mentioned before, option three is really similar. You might have noticed that the heat pump is not on the roof, it's indoors, which also has benefits of having more equipment indoors and less equipment. But the main thing here is that because it's exchanging heat with the ground as opposed to the heat pump chiller that was on the roof and exchanging with the air, the rest of it is the same in terms of air and radiant panels. So just a little bit about displacement ventilation. Displacement ventilation, again, as I just mentioned, supplies low air into the room. So it's supplying your air really where people are. People are going to be sitting or even standing, but they're generally in the lower half of the volume of height of the room. And so the air is supplied where you're breathing, in the breathing zone, and as the air warms up and the warm bodies that are in the room will start to warm that air. The air will rise and we exhaust it through the top of the room. The reason why we do displacement ventilation, there's a few different reasons. It improves indoor air quality because it's providing the fresh air really in the breathing zone. A typical overhead system that might be trying to blow the air from up high down to where you are while at the same time heat's trying, or air is trying to rise, it's warming, isn't going to give you as fresh air at the breathing zone. And so you have to do other things to try to make sure you have the same amount of air changes and fresh air. Has improved acoustics. The system is quieter because we blow the air in at a really low rate. So you don't hear, you know, air sort of rushing in. There is improved thermal comfort because again, one piece of it is it's providing the air where you are. So you're getting that temperature air really where you are as opposed to it mixing before it's getting to you, and maybe you're not feeling the warmth of the cool. And it also, that low velocity doesn't cause drafts. And then reduced energy. And so that's why displacement is really good and partners with low-energy buildings because it reduces the amount of energy needed to supply ventilation. And then system four, VRF, you can see it looks a little bit, or looks quite a bit different. Air handling unit's the same, but the ventilation is supplied up in the ceiling. So instead of that low supply, it's up in the ceiling. And again, it's trying to fight the mixing that's happening to get the air at the ventilation area or the breathing zone. And then the heating cooling is provided through a VRF unit. Like I said, it's a much smaller units, multiple of them on the ceiling or on the roof, and they supply the heating and cooling at the ceiling. And then this is showing cooling mode, but there are radiant heating panel, heating-only panels as supplemental. If there's any questions, I don't think there probably are. We, most of them are repeat slides, but that was sort of just setting the tone, kind of reminding everybody what we're what we're looking at, all the different options that we've been looking at, and you know, what the EUI targets are for net zero. So now we're going to go into the assessment, basically all the modeling, costing, and lifecycle assessments that we've been doing the last two months. So the first chart here is really a qualitative comparison of the four systems. And again, number one is the baseline. And then two, three, and four, you can see the systems that we just talked about. In this chart, it's looking at, you know, which systems could be net zero. Options three and four, as we mentioned earlier, are the ones that could be net zero because they can get to that EUI of 28 or less. Number three is the only system that can get to the EUI of 25, which is the requirement for ever-source for their net zero utility incentive. This is just comparative. We'll talk about actual EUI numbers in a minute, but you can kind of see how the four systems stack up. The next column here is looking at carbon emissions. Again, the all-electric systems are going to have, in general, less emissions because they're really relying on grid emissions. And we know the grid is continuously going to be required to get cleaner. Where a gas system, their emissions are what they are today. And as long as gas is always on site, you can't, you cannot improve that component of the emissions. But number three does have the least amount of emissions, and that is really directly tied to the efficiency. So it has the best EUI, uses the least amount of energy, and that equates to lowest emissions. And then here, the next two columns are really looking at some of those things we just talked about with indoor air quality and acoustics, and that's directly related to the displacement ventilation system we just looked at. And then we'll get into costs in a second. You can kind of just see, generally speaking, how energy costs and maintenance costs stack up. So this is, you know, this isn't a score, but you can see that number three does check all the boxes on these particular pieces, but we'll look at some other components as well. So this is a simple, simple cost comparison. You may have seen from other projects. And this is the economic engineering assessment that I was talking about, where we just look at capital cost, energy cost, maintenance cost, and the difference between the baseline, which in this case is number one, and the other systems. Here you can start to see the EUIs. All of these buildings or all of these systems will meet the MSBA requirement, but they do fluctuate from a high EUI of 33 to a low EUI is 24. So number three has the lowest, number one is the highest. For comparison, we also have the existing Dale Street building just noted at the bottom. You can see the capital investment cost. There's options two and three cost more from an HVAC cost standpoint. Then option one, the VRF options pretty equal in cost, it's slightly less, but less than, less than 1%. And then the total construction cost. So you can see that number three is about 3.3% higher in total construction cost. And that is the highest cost for that system. For energy costs and maintenance costs, you can see that options two and four actually have quite a bit more energy cost option than option one. And option three is actually showing savings. You'll see energy savings. And the annual maintenance costs, you can see that two and three are going to be less maintenance than option one. And the VRF option is actually quite a bit larger, 30% more in maintenance cost. So the combined annual cost, that's looking at the energy and the maintenance cost of the systems compared to the baseline. You can see that the only option with savings on an annual basis compared to option one is number three. Now, when we have this simple cost comparison, it's a few things that don't really get factored in here. One thing is that the utility incentives are not in here. There are other types of savings that net zero buildings can achieve that also don't get figured into these costs. And the energy cost is actually, doesn't include peak demand charges and the way that having solar, which you would have in a net zero building, can help mitigate some of those peak demand charges and actually produce savings. So what we've done in our assessment is we went beyond the simple cost comparison and did a detailed lifecycle cost analysis that looks at all costs and all savings associated with the net zero options versus the baseline option. So before we go into the results, the net zero lifecycle cost assessment, just want to set up how we did the assessment and some of the key points to it. As I just said, on the previous slide, it's option three and four, the net zero options that we're comparing to option one. It looks at the debt service cost of the increased net zero, the cost of the net zero options versus the operating savings. We've used very conservative assumptions in terms of a bond rate, interest rate that you might get, utility costs. We are not accounting for future escalation where the industry might go with utility costs. We're basing it on historic data only. And there's other metrics in there that we really on each metric looked at and made sure, are we being as conservative as we possibly could? And what that means is, are we making sure the cost is as conservatively high as it can be and is the savings as conservative as conservatively low as it could be? And we did look at a low, mid, and high scenario so that you can also see, you know, where we are today. And if the, say, for example, the bond rate, which is the piece that changes the most between the low, mid, and high, if the bond rate was three or four or five percent, and those are also the numbers that have been used in the PSR, so we're keeping consistency between them. Megan, I don't know if you wanted to share anything else?
You know, I think you did a great job. I just wanted to say, I do think these, our assumptions have been very conservative, and probably it's to our detriment that they have. Because I know just yesterday, I got an email from EverSource that told me my electric rates are going to go up 4% starting April 1. And our analysis assumes the electric rates are steady in the low scenario. So I do think we've taken care to be conservative.
So first, we're going to look at option three. As a reminder, that's the ground source heat pump system versus the baseline gas boiler system. The way these graphs are set up is zero is in the middle, and anything that's negative is a cost. So what we're looking at here is the debt service. And again, the debt service on that incremental cost, incremental construction cost between the two options on a 3%, 4%, 5% interest rate. And anything that's above the line is savings. And I'll walk through these in a second. So everything above zero is a savings. The savings for this particular option three to option one comparison are the O and M costs and replacing an equipment cost. So it's hard to see the O and M, but it's, it's just there over zero. So that's really the system itself and the equipment and the maintenance of that system. There are savings over that, number three over number one. This greenish bar, dark green bar, is AEC revenue. That's alternative energy credits. Those are credits that you can take advantage of. You're essentially selling on the AEC market, it's the Massachusetts market, the renewable energy, the renewable thermal energy from the geothermal system. And again, we've been pretty conservative because those markets can go, it can go very high and low in their swings. So we took sort of the lowest that the market has seen, and you know, not the highest that it seemed. And we tried to be pretty conservative. So the market has gone much higher, but we didn't want to show that here to just be more aligned with kind of the average rates. The orange bar is the energy savings. Again, if you remember back to the EUI, this system has an EUI of 24, and the baseline system has an EUI of 33. So there's significant energy reduction in number three. I will talk about, sometimes I get a question like, wow, 33 and 24, those seem like, like really far apart. So that's a lot of energy savings, and it is in terms of the actual amount of energy. It's a lot of energy. But number one right now is a gas system, and gas is pretty cheap compared to electricity. So we do again expect that over time, the price of gas, as gas is removed from the grid system, will be quite expensive, but we did not account for that here. And so you are seeing that that energy savings, while significant, is all, is still based on a baseline of a system that has a pretty cheap fuel for all of its heating demand. So I just like to point that out. And then from there up, the two last bars, the green and red bars are related to the solar PB. So for this scenario, for our assessments, we looked at a power purchase agreement, a PPA for that. That means that there's no capital cost to the project to install the solar. The PPA provider installs it for free, and then you buy or you pay them utility cost that is much, much lower than your utility cost would be to ever-source for that renewable energy. So you see savings because of that reduction in your utility rate to buy that renewable energy. And then the solar also helps reduce your peak demand charges. And so that's that red bar sitting on top. One piece of the assessment that we decided not to include were the battery savings. And that would be battery storage that would be on site that could store the energy from the solar panels that might come in at times where your building isn't using that much energy. That's another revenue stream. And it's something could definitely be instituted through a power purchase agreement or an ownership, and would be additional savings, similar to the savings that you see for solar, for the energy reduction, the utility rate, as well as the peak demand reduction. You'd get the same benefits from battery and that, you know, would be additional savings beyond this. At this point, we kind of kept it simple and looked at straight, you know, what is required for net zero, which is just the solar component to it. Um, as you can see, the savings for all three scenarios are greater than the cost. And so that would result in an annual, you know, average net benefit. Also, if you looked at the highest costs and the lowest savings, so just kind of transposing that blue bar from the bottom, right? You can see that you'd also see savings. This chart is really just taking all those colors and making it a dark blue bar. So it's a little bit simpler to read. Again, the costs versus the savings. If you transpose the costs, so just taking this amount of light blue, just transposing it on top of the dark blue, you can see the savings for each of those scenarios. And these are the dollar values for the annual net benefit, the difference between the savings and costs. And on a 30-year total, we've assumed, you know, a 30-year bond. And on a thirty-year total, um, we've assumed, you know, a thirty-year bond um in our assessment.
Am I supposed to talk now, Kate?
Yes, if you'd like to. I couldn't see you on there, so I was like, I don't wanna call him out if I can.
No, this was, this was, that was my cue, but I was wondering if the silence was because the the audio had cut out or if you were waiting for me to say something. Um, so for those who don't know me, I'm Alex Stevens. I'm on the Medfield Energy Committee and also on the Sustainability Subcommittee of the School Building Committee and uh have been working with Megan and Kate and the rest of the team on getting this model together. Just a brief two-second background, my professional life over the last two decades has been in energy modeling and energy efficiency for buildings, so that's why I'm involved with this particular part of the project and our role as an independent third party is to just sort of not be invested in any particular outcome, but to provide uh numbers that uh customers, in this case, the town of Medfield, can use to make uh sound decisions about energy, just energy choices. So the the top of this slide is now showing the thirty-year total of the annual benefits, so in the scenario with the lowest debt service, which is the three percent uh bond rate on the left. Um, the annual or the thirty-year total savings is approaching one and a half million dollars. Um, and then those numbers uh drop down as the debt service gets higher. Um, and as Kate had said before, we're really trying to present something that's um as conservative as possible, and as Megan chimed in, almost almost to our detriment that you know, three percent is the bottom, while we think that, you know, we've heard anyway, anecdotally, of other uh bonds going out for less than three percent in the current low-interest rate market. So the um other things that are not being um counted, I think as Kate mentioned before, is that we're looking at the sort of straight costs without uh taking a discount on future costs, right? So the net present value is based on the current value of dollars, so that also makes the results more conservative. Um, but in any of these scenarios, what we're showing is that the um savings, even in the worst case, where you compare the highest debt load to the lowest benefits are um outweighing the costs. And I think the other thing that's important to realize is that the, you know, the magnitude of these savings and costs, while they're not tiny amounts, you know, they're up to six-figure per year benefit and, you know, high-five-figure costs. We're, we're showing that the overall uh dollar numbers are relatively low compared to the o- overall project costs or even much lower than that compared to the town's operating budget. So we're not, you know, there's not an option where we're saying you know, the risk on the table is millions of dollars per year or the, you know, I guess on the flip side, neither is the benefit, but we're saying that for very low additional annual uh debt service, we're gonna exceed that amount based on these projections and benefits to the town. And that, you know, one of the things that could be looked at from that perspective is the um you know, building a new school that's gonna be larger than the existing school and have more uh spaces that'll have uh year-round cooling and, you know, more programmatical features that will drive up the energy costs, you know, compared to the existing Dale Street School. That these savings, in addition to covering the debt service, could also offset some of those additional operating costs that would otherwise be a a new line item or an an increased line item in the town's budget. So I think that's enough for me rambling on for this particular slide.
Okay, thanks. Um, so that is the analysis for option three verse one. This is the option for the VRS, VRF verse one. Um, again, the below line is the cost. You'll notice that in this particular scenario.
Hey, Kate, before you start that, um, just quick overview for people who don't understand what a VRF is.
Sure.
And and so how it's a little bit different and how it um um, you know, heats and cools a building.
Yeah, um, if you remember back twenty slides or so um to a diagram, we showed a little box, a smaller box kinda sitting on the roof, and that's the VRF unit. Um, and it can do simultaneous heating and cooling for different spaces, so that one little box might serve uh ten spaces, ten rooms, ten classrooms. Um, and it would be able to buy controls. It could be sort of heating one room and cooling another if, you know, one was getting more so- solar gain or something at that point, or um kids were really running around and they needed some cooling in a classroom, another classroom that everyone's quietly reading. So um, that's how that system works. Um, it uses um similar to air source heat pump, it's using outdoor um air as its um heat transfer. Um, but it is, but it is a a smaller unit and it doesn't require a supplement or boiler like option one, which has an air source heat pump, um, but also requires um the boiler as well. Um, can I do, is that, um, and then we we also covered the ventilation, right? So in that diagram, we were showing how um, the terminal units that give the heating cooling are all in the ceiling and the supply where the air ventilation air is coming out is also in the ceiling. So that's the one option that does not have displacement. You can't, you can't combine displacement with the VRF. Um, if we would, we we would do that. If we could, we would do that, um, but it's not how that system works. Um, and there are, um, as you can see in this chart, what this is really showing here is um the um purple and yellow, the O and M costs and the replacement equipment costs are um our costs. Um, where on the previous version, or number three verse one, you saw those were savings. Um, and that's because the VRF system does require a lot more um maintenance. Um, and it also uh requires more replacement um of equipment um over time um because the exterior units as well as things like, um, you know, I said mentioned before, a lot more filters to replace in a lot of locations versus replacing filters in one big, um, you know, chiller or or air handler. Um, so those are a couple of other components of why you see the flip or not flip, but you see some things that were savings for option three are now actually cost for option four. Um, in addition to O and M and equipment, the energy cost is now a cost. It was an energy savings above line on the previous number three assessment, and that's because of that um component, I was mentioning before, where gas is cheap today. Um, so even though the VRF option can get to an EUI of twenty-eight and be in that zero building, um, it's using all-electric versus number one, again, it's using a lot of gas, um, because all of the heating load is gas. And so that energy savings on this case um does not uh make up for the the low cost of gas. Um, the debt service uh for this scenario, um, the high scenario is a cost. Um, if, if you might recall, to the straight construction cost between the BRF and option one um was less than one percent different, so the the cost is very similar, and that's why mid you see it. Um, well, you'll see it in a second when I flip up the savings, but it's basically a wash um for the mid-scenario, and um the reason why on the high scenario, we're saying, well, what if the VR- VRF system? The escalation is higher than we're assuming. On the low side, we're saying, well, what if the VRF system costs less at bid time than we are assuming? Um, so that's why you see the debt service as a cost on high um and on the low, oops, on the low, it's a savings. Um, and then similar to option three, you see the AEC, solar, and peak demand. Those are all, you know, direct savings. Um, those would never be costs. But overall, you can see that the savings is higher um than the cost on each one, and if we took the highest cost and the lowest savings, which is actually the mid, in this particular case, you still see savings um on an annual basis. This is the same chart we were showing for option three, um, where if you transposed all of the costs onto the savings, you see an annual net benefit and a thirty-year total.
Okay, me again?
Sure, if you'd like to add something, um.
Sure. I mean, I think, and maybe a little bit to Mike's question a few minutes ago, the I think of the VRF as as sort of uh maybe some people have these in their homes. I have, I have them at my home, um. You know, sort of a scaled-up version of what you might have at your home, where you have a an indoor unit that might be mounted on the wall or near the ceiling. And then an outdoor unit that's that's either doing cooling in the summer or heating in the winter, and um that's different than the than the other options where the, what's actually doing the cooling or heating in the in the individual spaces is water that's being circulated back to a mechanical room where then you're heating or cooling that water. So in this case, the refrigerant um is being circulated out into the uh units in each room and then back to the roof where it's being condensed or evaporated uh to to provide that heating or cooling. Um, and we looked at the system primarily as a a due diligence uh effort to see, this was another system type that could achieve the definition of the net zero um EUI of twenty-eight or less, but it didn't meet Eversource's requirement for the enhanced incentives under their uh net zero program of twenty-five, so only the the geothermal option three does that. So we're still showing that this has um, you know, savings on the thirty-year total, similar to the last slide that I talked about. You know, in the si- in a similar range, six hundred thousand up to one point nine million, depending upon which scenario we're looking at in terms of the high, medium, or low assumptions. But going back to Kate's earlier chart where we had the circles that were filled in or or um or not, this system didn't score as high from uh O and M cost or from an O and M perspective, from an indoor air quality and acoustics perspective, from a energy cost perspective, so it's sort of uh, the also ran, I I guess, candidate in terms of, it could work and it could meet the net zero requirement, but it doesn't have the same benefits uh as the geothermal option, both from a performance and an economics perspective.
That's a great turn transition to this slide. Um, so this is really just summarizing um the detailed life cycle cost analysis as well as pulling in some of those green charts from earlier with the qualitative um components to, again, look at option three and four, the net zero options um versus option one, the base design.
Hey, one, one thing I think, um, if you could clarify um, why option two is not part of this, um, I know that there was very very little difference between one and two in regards to um, you know, costs and and energy consumption, but maybe you can just elaborate why the number two is not included here.
Um, yes, so uh, the reason why we're comparing to number one specifically is because that's the lowest um capital cost. And then for number two, again, like you said, it has almost the same capital cost as um number one, and the EUI is a bit lower. Um, and so, again, we're specifically, we're looking at the net zero options, which would have um, you know, much lower energy costs, you'd actually see those savings, the orange bars, or orange on our bar charts um as well as the the solar savings and reduced demand. Um, so you wouldn't see um, you you would get some savings from energy, um, and uh you'd get um costs, added to cost through the O and M, it would look much more similar to the VRF um in terms of what's below the bar. Um, and although the orange would actually be a bigger amount, and it would be below the bar. Um, so you basically wouldn't be getting any of the savings that's shown here, and you would just mostly be seeing costs, although um, the debt service, uh, you know, would be um similar to the mid-range um based on our estimate of the cost of that system, so. Something that answers your, answers your question.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure people understand because we showed them four options to start. Um, and option one and option two are very similar. You know, the one difference between option one and option two, the this small differences, but the big difference being that going all-electric, we do get rid of the the carbon issue and we're not burning fossil fuels on site, so um um, but other than that, um, you know, the the uh option one and option two are not drastically different enough, so um, most of the effort was spent here on um bigger jumps to the VRF or the geothermal options.
Right. Um, if you're gonna go all a- all-electric, you know, you see a lot more benefit from both a cost or a financial perspective as well as a, um, you know, environmental perspective by going to option three or four.
I think, can I add one little, hopefully, useful engineering description of that?
Um, please.
For, for the gas boiler option, number one, or the electric boiler option, number two, what you're really doing is trading, well, at least right now in terms of pricing, see as cheap gas for more expensive electricity, but the performance of in terms of heating uh from an efficient gas boiler to an electric boiler is a small jump. Um, but for the two heat pump options, um, the way those work for an electric boiler, every uh unit of heat that you need in the building is corresponds to one unit of electricity that you need to feed into the boiler. But for the heat pump options, the way those work, for every unit of heat that you need in the building, you need somewhere between one-third of a unit or one-fifth of a unit um of electric input. So because they're taking heat either out of the air or out of the ground, your electric use is really just to drive the heat from the air or the ground into the building and not to actually directly convert the heat from electricity into um into heat in the space. So that's why, as Kate was just saying, the orange bar on the um if we did the the orange bar chart for the electric boiler, that energy cost would be a much bigger uh chunk below the line because the only real difference is that you're trading at least what's now cheap gas for expensive electricity without the huge performance increase that you get from a heat pump that offsets that cost differential.
Thanks, Alex.
Yep.
Um, so uh this is really just summarizing, you know, what we've shown um with one additional line here um that looks at the annual savings after the bond is paid off. Um, so years thirty to fifty, we assume if you're your life, um, you can see what the annual um savings would be at that time because you're getting all those savings and you have no debt service um reducing those savings. Um, as we mentioned, the surplus in savings, you know, a potential um use or or reason to um, you know, be able to um see that savings is that, you know, a bigger building that is also fully heated, cooled, and ventilated um does have a higher maintenance cost. Um, we talked about indoor environment. Um, you know, option three, the displacement system and no combustion on site, has the best indoor environment from a air quality and and a thermal perspective and acoustics. Um, and then we really kinda talked already about the maintenance concerns, um, with the number four, the VRF system. And um, there's just a footnote that says the annual savings are based on the lowest numbers. Um, so this is obviously one of the worst-case to our most conservative. I'm gonna hand this over to Megan.
Thank you, Kate. That that was really great. So um, as we've gone through, a net zero building does require an investment, but it also has um many environmental, educational, financial benefits that make it a good and feasible choice for the town. We think to, so to recap, focused in on option three, really the ground horse source heat pump because it has the most benefits. You could move to the next slide if you would. The lowest EUI of twenty-four, the lowest maintenance cost, the lowest energy costs. It's also cash flow positive, where the debt service on the incremental capital is offset by the annual savings. And the, as Kate just said, the And the as Kate just said, that savings can be used to offset increased operating expenses. The energy savings will continue after the debt service is paid and we really believe we've come at this from a conservative financial assessment side. So the other areas in which, of course, besides the financial net zero makes sense is that it provides us with a healthy and comfortable learning environment, provides educational opportunities for teaching. And of course, it's a fossil fuel choice, a fossil fuel free option, which is the best choice for the climate. And this allows us to allow this building to be aligned with the state's goal to be net zero in twenty fifty and really, you know, takes advantage of the fact that we're building a building with at least a fifty year lifespan ahead of it. So in summary, we we do think that this is a an option, a realistic opportunity for Bedfield to have a net zero building. And that is at a cost that is neutral or better for for the town on an annual basis.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna pause here. What what I would like to do is open it up for questions and I'm gonna also open it up for public questions. We'll take the committees and the board of selectmen first, but if anyone from the public has questions regarding this presentation so far, please put them in the Q and A along with your name and address. And we will read those off as long as they are relevant to this topic. And so with that, I'll I'll open it up to the SBC or the Board of Selectmen if anyone has any questions for Kate or Megan or Alec.
Mike, could I start off, please?
Absolutely.
I know from Mark Sandin's, who's the select board member from Lexington that brought this sort of analysis to us in the first instance, thanks of to the work of Fred Davis from bringing it back from the MMA Annual Meeting Workshop. But Mark Sandin include, he said that the 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 batteries and the ability to offset the energy use to times when the payment for the energy was lower was okay, I don't know the right thank you. But but he said that that was a huge savings for Lexington. And and I heard Kate say that that wasn't included, but is is that something that we're gonna look at eventually, whether that makes sense financially to do or not?
Yeah, so I'll just quickly chime in a little bit and then I'll have Kate fill in the rest, but so that does require sort of a a much higher level of analysis that on the battery savings, we would need to be, you know, in discussions with people that do that on a regular basis. And so any savings for, we do have some peak demand savings, as you can see here, but the battery is what really pushed the Lexington one even much higher. And it's something that if we do explore this, that we would definitely want to go further into. One key thing that I want to make sure is clear to everybody is all of these options include the photovoltaic system. And they include that, which is the the biggest section here in that green section. Because basically, that's really what makes the finances make the most sense. When instead of buying electricity from the grid, we're buying it through a PPA or power purchase agreement where the town isn't paying any money upfront, but we're signing a deal with a provider to provide this photovoltaic system to generate electricity on site. And then we buy it back from them at an extremely reduced rate. So that savings, you can see, is the biggest chunk of the savings portion. And the ability to do that is kind of critical to all this making sense financially. So the PPA has the benefit, though, of it requiring no upfront cost to the town. So it's just a matter of entering into that agreement and and so the the demand savings is still also part of that. And if but as you can see, even without that factored in, there was a point where these systems make sense from the overall sort of cash flow perspective of cost versus savings. So that would require sort of a much higher level of analysis and it would be something that we would factor into any sort of PPA agreement that we enter into. So with that, I'll add, I'll hand it off to Kate to see if she has anything to add on that.
And nope, that you pretty much covered it. And you know, the battery savings would be probably at least equal to the solar savings. I'll just add that in. And again, on the solar savings, you know, we've seen solar savings that are double in terms of the rate, the rate reduction than what we're doing, what we're showing here. So we're really, again, we're showing a six cent reduction and we've seen projects recently getting twelve cent reduction. But again, we're just trying to be conservative and sort of using sort of half you know, that value, knowing, you know, it could be a year away from signing a contract for that.
Those sorts of numbers make it sound like it makes sense to pursue it. So I hope that we do get answers on that. Your answer, Mike, raised another question for me, which was, I think, the Energy Committee and looking at what sort of solar to go forward with came up with a determination that a hybrid system is what they called it was the the way for the town to go forward where it's originally owned by a private party that can take advantage of the tax savings. But then after six years or so turns it over to the town. Is that the sort of system we're talking about here?
So can I answer that?
Yep. Yep.
Right now, no, we're not, Pete. We're, this is looking at just a straight PPA without the hybrid system so that the the PPA entity would own the the panels at least for twenty years or so. And to what we were just saying a minute ago, the this version is the sort of most pessimistic or the the least generous way of looking at it where we're not counting the battery savings. And we're counting a moderate discount in the electric rate from a PPA and what we believe is that the hybrid system for the for the solar, which has been investigated by the the other arm of the Energy Committee and then adding the battery savings would make these figures look even better. So what we're trying to show here is that even if we get really pessimistic about, you know, okay, there's no more battery program, there's no more, you know, we don't get a a favorable rate on the PPA, we're still showing that in this worst case of worst case scenarios, it still comes out with a positive cash flow. Now, if we go forward down this path, then we would want to hire a consultant who would be able to give us more definitive numbers for all those factors. And that would refine this projection, but we you know, wanted to get through this step with the with the more conservative figures before you know, before pursuing that additional outlay for 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 someone to help us refine the numbers beyond what we've got here. But I think, you know, if we did that, we, as Kate was saying, we could probably double the the solar and, you know, add a similar amount for the battery. So that would make the as you know, to what Lexington found, the the cash flow figures would be all that much better.
Thank you.
Other questions? I know there's gotta be a few out there.
Mike, you kind of stole my thunder on the solar savings. But so these all assume that we'll have a solar array in the roof owned by a third party. Who pays? So when they own it today, do they pay for all the infrastructure? They pay for all the panels, all the racking, everything hundred percent? Is that a separate, is that a separate contract we have for a subcontractor throughout that's bid out separately?
Yeah, so the PPA would do all the installation. We provide some empty conduits and then make sure there's room for their equipment as part of the base construction. And then they'll come in and do their installation either at the very end of construction or, you know, just after substantial completion of the main construction project and it would be separate. It's not managed under the contractor or the the GC for the project.
So, you know, the these PPAs, I'm no expert on them, but they're they're becoming relatively popular and there's even more and more grant money available that we may even explore if we decide to do a PPA. And I'm sure Fred and the the Energy Committee are much more well versed in it than I am. But you know, we would put an RFP together and make it competitive. And the more as a town, the more we can do in one chunk. It doesn't even have to be on the same site. But if we were looking at other sites in addition to this one and we package that into an RFP for a power purchase agreement, then then we would get even better bids back for it on the reduced electrical rate. So so if this, if this is a path that we end up going down and we do decide to pursue a PPA, we wouldn't want to just look at this project, you know, I think the Energy Committee has some other other areas that they're targeting for other solar installations. So and then, you know, we could seek out grant monies potentially to help someone write the RFP for us.
Mike, I think I would just add that we we would love to have some help with figuring out what the best scenario is for Medfield. And like you said, could we pull in the you know, old landfill project or something at other schools and just combine them all at the same time. And then the whole analysis to be easy to say, okay, let's just do a PPA. We could put that out to bed, come back with that. But would that be the best? Should we be trying the hybrid? Should we try to own it? That really will involve some consulting when we'll require some funds from somewhere to in order to analyze that.
Yeah, I just don't have any funds left.
Which is why I'm telling
Find them elsewhere.
That's why I'm telling everybody in the room.
And again, not again, but I would also just mention we're sizing the array, the amount of square footage PV of PV as what would be required to offset the energy. So to just hit the net zero, you might put more PV regardless of other projects. You know, we might, we know that it'll fit on the roof, but maybe we actually can fit more on the roof, you know, it could be a net positive building. That's just the definition. When you produce more renewables, then you're actually using energy. So those are other things that we would look at as we got through the solar design.
And again, this is showing sort of I call, I was calling it before, sort of this is opening the door to a larger exploration. If we think it makes sense at this conservative you know, lowest benefit amount, then we could, you know, do those further investigations to to open it up to a more comprehensive and financially beneficial approach.
Since this slide is up, I've had a couple of questions on this slide. So looking in the slide with all the numbers you put up, is is it correct that the the difference in cost between these two systems is one point five million dollars?
Yes, the capital. Cost between three and one.
All right. So we're basically, the discussion here is about spending an extra one point five million dollars. That's the that's the discussion, correct?
Yeah, that's the straight capital.
And so, well, okay, I wanted to ask about the bar charts again. I just want to make sure I had so what are you? If you're using, I'm having trouble following is the debt service number. Because if it's one point five million over thirty years, isn't that fifty thousand dollars in principal per year?
Yes.
All right. So I mean, what are you using it in as an interest rate in your high scenario to get to a ninety five thousand dollar a year annual debt service on one point five million dollars over thirty years?
So two things on that, they they've used, so the low is three percent, the mid is four percent and the high is five percent.
Five percent would be wouldn't that be twenty five hundred dollars?
Five percent would be seventy five thousand dollars from the principal payment alone.
Oh, I see.
So and then in terms
The high scenario is is combining two things. It's saying, what if the interest rate was five percent? And it's also saying, what if the cost that one point five is actually, what if we did, what do we find out? We need more wells? I think we used ten percent more wells and so the the construction cost is going up as well as the interest rate.
Yeah. So the the base scenario, we we are estimating right now that a geothermal system to heat and cool a building of this size would be approximately forty wells. Because each well can only produce so much capacity. So in the low scenario, there's thirty five wells. In the high scenario, there's forty five wells. So at a cost of approximately forty six, forty seven thousand dollars per well. So the the capital cost while under the mid scenario is one point five million, under the high scenario, you know, is what is that? An additional two hundred thousand or so, two hundred and something thousand dollars.
The high scenario is getting is adding additional upfront costs as well, in addition to the debt service. I'm still having, I'm still having trouble with the dramatic difference between, so the high scenario here assumes the higher upfront and the highest interest rate.
Right. It's the worst case high and the low is the opposite of that. It's the best case low. So we reduce the number of wells there by five. So the construction cost is not one point five, it's it's less than that. And you have the best or the lowest interest rate.
And so and and then just on the debt service, Mike. So the principal payments, we we've assumed because, you know, we can't run, you know, every single option under the sun. We've assumed a level principal payment and a varied, obviously interest payment, right? So each year, the interest payment actually goes down. And what this is reflecting is sort of an average cost over over the thirty year span for the interest expense.
Thank you. That's what I was having a hard time following on the the degree of difference. So in other words.
Figured you were going there because I asked the same exact question.
Yeah, that that's what it looked like. It was for the difference between three percent and five percent interest, it looked like it was almost double. I get it now with the we get it now with that. So so you're anywhere in a range from eighty nine thousand to you know, a hundred and thirty five thousand annually.
For debt service?
Yeah.
I don't think it's that high.
No, I don't think it's that high, yeah.
Oh, yeah, a hundred and thirty. Yes.
You're right. Okay.
I can I just say too that we did take the ever source savings?
Okay. No, go ahead. I have a couple more.
I just wondered, we netted out the ever source savings in the what we're financing.
So the just just to clarify that, so the the geothermal system is the only system that would meet the requirements of this new ever source path that we're exploring. And basically is a hundred thousand dollar benefit between the two. So when Megan says she netted it out, it means that's that's already taken out of the upfront cost.
All right. So so all right. So the range is eighty nine thousand in best case to a hundred and thirty thousand in the worst case. And so that that's sort of the that's kind of the bogey for the energy saves. You have to get over an annual energy savings of eighty nine thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand. Everything over that, you're into kind of a net economic benefit. All right. That's helpful.
That's just in the first year, right? Because after that, they go down. So we have taken the average, right? So the first year it's a hundred and thirty, but the last year it's sixty five.
Sure. Yep, I got you. And the average is what's reflected on the chart.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
All right. And then with respect to the electricity escalator, you've put no escalator, or just assuming steady electricity costs?
In the low scenario, okay.
Go ahead, Megan. I'll let you explain.
In the low scenario, on the left, we have, it's the current cost. In the mid scenario, it's a six percent increase. And in the the high scenario, it was a twenty two percent increase, but on the low.
No, so that's a one time increase, right?
It is.
Correct. So the the Mike, the the low scenario reflects zero increase in electrical costs over the span of thirty years. The mid scenario assumes a, I believe it was six cents, Megan.
Six percent.
Six percent over the span of thirty years, which again, extremely low, I expect it's going to be fully much higher than that. And then the high scenario was the twenty two percent. Is that right, Megan?
Yes.
So over the span of thirty years. So again, very conservative way to approach this.
And they're really not, I mean, I mean, they're listed on top of each other because they're both all low, mid and high. And they're really not, I mean, they're listed on top of each other because they're both all low, mid and high. But is there any connection between the two? And there's no connection between the costs upfront being higher than what happens to electricity markets, is there?
No, nothing that happens on the saving side is reflected in in the cost side.
So you really could have any.
Exactly.
Any of the combinations, you could have the low debt service combined with the rest of it and and all the rest. Okay, and I apologize if you went through this, I got kicked off three times during the meeting, so.
That's why this one is showing the combination of the in the black dashed boxes, the. The worst case debt load and then the also the worst case benefits and still showing that there's some leftover to. Even in a, even in the in that worst case, there's still some leftover, I think.
Net benefit.
Yeah, one one technical. Question, when Mike, when you were explaining the number of wells and stuff like that, I think it might be important just to say from a technical perspective, that when we're talking about wells, we're not talking about. Like a drinking water well where you're pumping water around, it's really.
It's a closed loop. Right, it all it does is circulate through the ground and transfer heat from within the building to the ground. In the summertime and pull pull cooler, it comes through, it comes out cooler. And then in the winter time, it's basically doing the opposite because it's using the the earth's core temperature, which is a lot steadier than the air. To move that energy from the earth and into the building.
Right, so it's right, the water might go into the ground at. I don't know, 90 degrees and come back out.
Into the loop, it doesn't go into the ground.
Into the pipe that's in that's buried in the ground, so it's just, it's basically a pipe that's buried in the ground that water goes into the pipe at one temperature and comes out at a different temperature, but you're not actually. Pumping water out of the ground or.
Correct.
Impacting the the water table or anything like that.
You're neither injecting nor extracting, you're just circulating through in a closed loop.
And just just one last question, and I think hopefully one last question. So if if the escalation electricity cost is higher than projected, obviously the savings are even greater.
Exactly.
Right, I mean, it seems to me, one of the advantages of the geothermal. Is that it reduces, it eliminates one of variables over which we don't have any control. It seems like in the, I know we're not looking at scenario number two, we're not comparing it to scenario number two, but it seems like. In an all electric situation, you're kind of at the mercy of the energy. You know, if you're trying to get to net zero at the mercy of the the grid and the rest of it, but you're even more at the mercy of the cost of electricity. Whereas here, if you're eliminating any of those that electricity need, you are controlling a larger percentage of the costs yourself through the system. Rather than depending on what's happening in the electricity markets, the regulators, that all of that.
And you do have, and you do have flexibility of where you get your electricity from, right? Whereas gas, you can't go and get gas from somebody else, it is who your supplier is. So, you know, being all electric inherently gives you some flexibility over being able to control the pricing. But then, of course, if you're using, you know, 50% less energy, then you're, you know, making that fluctuation smaller.
Yeah, there's 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 two parts of the equation, it's the supply and the consumption, obviously. So the by going all electric, we have the ability to generate that on site with the photovoltaics. So we're not at the mercy of the grid and, you know, if we get to a point where we truly are net zero and it's and it plays out that way. We're controlling our own destiny more by being able to produce that energy on site as opposed to relying on a utility.
And are the are the heat pumps, are the heat pumps reimbursable by the MSBA?
So it's not necessarily a direct thing, but the the MSBA has caps, right? We've talked about this in the past where they cap out, you know, the building construction at $333 a square foot. So any capital cost that we're discussing here tonight increases are solely on the on the plate of the town. We're not going to see an increased reimbursement by increasing our capital costs on HVAC. So this is purely a town, a town decision and a town financial discussion.
But Mike, to clarify what you just said in regards to the photovoltaics. Don't we dump it back into the grid and then just pay a reduced rate or get SFRX as you as you dump your own electricity back to the grid? Or whatever the program is you're in, as opposed to actually utilizing the electricity you generate?
Because I'll let Kate chime in on that, she's more of an expert, but that's not the way I understand it. Kate, do you want to clarify?
You can don't, you can do it both ways. Net metering was what you're describing is usually where you get the most benefits from that. But if you also start looking at battery storage, that's where you actually would be storing some of your electricity. So you're you're not backfeeding through net metering, your storing and then using when you need it. So the answer is there's there's multiple ways to to do it, to people pick pick which one is most financially feasible for them. And it can change over time, right? So you can you can decide, you know, to change the the way that it's working over time. More control, obviously, when you own your system versus the PPA, PPA is it's doing what it's doing for, you know, the 20 years or whatever you have that PPA.
But you can only change it if you have the infrastructure for the batteries and room for the capacity in the building for the batteries and the right inverters and all that.
Right, and you can you can add battery storage later, it doesn't have to be there day one. As a technology that is evolving pretty rapidly. So again, it allows you to, you know, having the P or having the PV being all electric allows you flexibility 25 years, you know, down the road. Depending on what's happening in the utility market, you have options as to to what you can do, what you would want to do.
I think Mike Markucci, since there's so many mics on here, I'll clarify it, it's Mike Markucci who brought up a good point a few minutes ago, which is that the. These analyses are showing very limited changes in utility costs. We don't know, I mean, we don't have the crystal ball to say we know what's going to happen to electricity or gas prices going, you know, 5, 10, 15, you know, 30 or 50 years into the future. But one of the benefits of the PV system is that whether it's a PPA where you're going to have a long term contract for the purchase price of kilowatt hours. I think we were talking with Acton Boxborough, who's, I think their net cost is four cents per kilowatt hour. For, you know, going forward for quite, I think, 20 years, is that right?
They had a step, it went four, five and then six.
But I mean, so that's compared to right now, 18, 19 or 20 cents. And who knows what that would be in the future? So whether you have a PPA and you have a long term contract for the electricity cost. Or if you own the panels outright and your long term cost is really just paying for the the panels. You've suddenly taken that variable out from being something that could swing your operating costs dramatically in the future to something where you know what it is from day one and going forward for the, you know, the life of the. At least the life of the the PPA, just, you know, 20 years or so. So that's that does give us a lot more certainty as far as, you know, if we investigate that part in more detail and get the, you know, firm numbers, whether it's hybrid PPA or purchase it outright. We would. Be able to confidently, you know. Take that variable off the table and have it be a fixed number that we know about from the start.
Mike Markucci, you said you had some other math related questions?
No, my my math question was just on the escalator, so I'm, and the assumptions, I'm I'm good for now. I will, I will just say, we should do whatever explorations there are. I would just say, given the limits of the size of our government, I think I'm skeptical of ownership versus letting someone else have responsibility for the equipment and everything else. And so from my from my perspective, I, there would have to be a very dramatic difference in cost between ownership and a contract before I'd be saying with our very small government. We're going to take on this added work for all this additional solar. That's just an editorial comment for the future exploration and and an added risk to take into account. But I'm good with the slides and I appreciate the clarification and I'm sorry I was, my internet kicked me off and I might have missed it if if you covered all those things I asked.
No, those were good questions. I will say, just for clarification, we already do own a few solar systems, so you know, we put one on the public safety building and I believe the. The water treatment plant so has one as well.
I I do know that, it's just a question of how many more do we want to own?
I know, I'm just teasing.
We own a few few buildings too, I'm not looking to build five more.
All right. That's fair. Gus, you've been you've been fairly quiet and I'm sure observing patiently, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, Mike, and I guess they fall into two or three categories, so I'm going to start, technical, financial and maybe policy. And let me, and the technical ones are just to make sure I know what it is I'm seeing in this data and I understand what it means. First question is, option one, the gas boiler, that's the baseline. And incidentally, some of my questions are going to be dumb, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't occasionally ask dumb questions. The gas boiler as the baseline, does that represent kind of the stat, is that the system we would put into a school? If we were just kind of continuing, like, why is that the baseline?
Sure, I'll touch on it a little bit and then Kate probably has some thoughts too. So that baseline is a system that would meet the criteria. That we voted on to pursue the additional incentive points, so it's already a very sort of sustainable approach, that system. Obviously, there are some things that it doesn't do in terms of, you know, fossil fuels, et cetera, and carbon emissions. But, you know, this this the school building committee did vote to pursue that additional incentive points to make this sort of more sustainable than what I would say would be your your base MSBA type system. So we took that first step, but this, we wanted to come here to see, you know, what additional steps we wanted to take and get your input on that. So Kate, do you want to, you know, maybe elaborate a little on the the base system?
Yeah, I'll just add a couple other things, so, you know, it is the least construct, the least upfront capital cost system. But it also uses the most energy, it's the worst energy performing system that would pass the MSBA requirement. And we all, we originally, up until a few weeks ago, wanted to not use as much gas in that system. And we found out from the utility from ever source that they wouldn't supply a gas line to the site. If we didn't use more gas in the building. So we actually had to use redo our modeling to use more gas for heating. And use less of the more efficient heat pumps. So, you know, that similar system could be, you know, closer to a EUI of 30 versus 33 is what is that right now? But again, we couldn't actually do that because we wouldn't be able to get gas for the amount of gas we were using for heating. So that's where kind of where we are with that system. The caveat on that is by using more gas, it makes the energy costs look even cheaper. So that orange bar, that savings comparison to the option one that we would prefer to do because it would, you know, use less energy. You know, now we're using a lot more energy in that option one, unfortunately, although it is cheaper energy, it's more gas.
Okay, so I have a couple of follow on questions, let me jump to one. I think it's slide 19 on your deck, it's the it's the simple cost comparison. That that, not that one, there's another one, maybe one more up. It has, oh no, no, go back down, I'm sorry, maybe I'm looking at an earlier ver. I'm looking at an earlier version is what it is.
The version I sent you was the draft, Gus, so.
Yeah, well, the issue I have was the, what's missing from this is the annual, the actual cost, annual cost. This has got the the rate, but not the cost. And and just so you know why I had the question, is I couldn't, when I compared one to three. Using the actual numbers for an annual cost, I couldn't construct an $11,000 difference. So I had a question around, if you go to the, if you go up to slide 18.
The number was wrong on the draft that you saw, the $122,000 for the energy cost for option one was actually 133,000. That it accidentally only reflected the electric, not the gas and electric on there. The the percentages and the the combined annual cost is correct.
Okay, so then back to the original answer you gave me, Kate, if I go to the charts that show the savings and the benefits and.
The blue chart.
I am working off that older ones, I realize my page numbers, slide numbers aren't helpful, but it's the one that shows the debt as both savings and as cost. So the.
Of the VRF option.
VR, yeah, it was VRF.
Yep.
Was VRF.
Now, can you go back to the colored one, Kate? So I think what Gus is looking at here is the debt service.
So when I saw this and I couldn't figure out how debt could both be a savings and a cost, I realized this is this, all of this information is being measured against an index. Which I don't.
The first option.
I'm not sure I understand the index, I think it's the first, it's the index of the first case. So this is kind of that really what the savings and the cost for the system really are. It's what the incrementally increased savings and increased cost against the number one baseline is, is that?
Correct.
Correct. So so in other words, in Gus, in in this option with the low, on the low side. There is less debt service upfront, which is why it's above the line.
No, no, I I understand what I what I'm getting at is initially I was looking at it at this.
No, your debt service isn't total 50,000, thousands of dollars, it's 50, it would, you know, it'd be 50,000 more than option one.
If I paid more attention to the numbers, even with some of the other charts, I probably could have figured that out. But this one, when the debt showed up on both sides, cost and savings, I realized this was being measured against an index. And I wasn't sure I understood what that index was. And in terms of the overall performance of the system, in terms of total cost and total savings, I still don't think I I understand the system. But that's an observation, I I understand what the slide is being used for, it's just it threw me off to start with. Now, let me ask you to go to either one of those all blue slides. So it one of them's the VRF and one of them's option three, and I'm going to eventually need to go to both. So here's option three, which is showing a 30 year, and I'm going to, just for argument's sake, I'll stick with the low scenario. Shows a 30 year cumulative saving, cumulative savings of a little under one and a half million dollars. I'll make the observation, that's undiscounted, so that's just 30 times the annual savings, which is fine, just so we know what we're looking at. Go down to the one for VRF. Again, just looking at the low, I realize if I look at the high, it's not true anymore. But looking at the high, I see here a projected, a projection of a half million dollars more savings for the VRF system than option three. Tell me why that isn't the right way for me to see that, that leaving aside the the high part, I get that. But why am I not saying, wait a minute, this is saying VRF saves a half million dollars more than option three?
That's correct. And it's because in that low option, we're doing two things, we're saying the VRF system is actually, if it, the low would be, what if it's cheaper, right? A bid time, it comes in cheaper than what we think today's estimate is the, which is escalated, our estimates are escalated, but that's the mid. So what if it actually comes in 10%, you know, 5% cheaper? And what our debt service is only 3%, so it's, again, it's like the the best of both worlds. It comes in cheaper than we, than our estimates are showing. And you get the lower interest rate, so that it's that flipping that debt service above the line is really the component that is making the difference in the 30 year between the.
So I'll make, again, I'll make it up, I'm not, I'm not really trying to pick fights here, I'm just, I want to make sure I understand what I'm looking at and what it's telling me. I would probably say in that case, then maybe the mid, the mid level is the prudent one. And I think actually even there, the VRF number is slightly higher, not by a lot, but it's slightly higher than the option three. And I understand the argument that might say, yeah, but we want to hedge against the worst case. And in the worst case, option three is better than VRF. But I I I'm making an observation that we're we're hedging risk in the in the, I think, we're hedging risk in the uncertainty around this. In the thought process, and I I'm just trying to understand the technical thought process here. So am I, does that sound like I'm thinking about it right? Or have I confused you, you're not sure how?
No, I, no, I. No, I, no, I, I think I understand your question. I mean, I think what we tried to do is kind of take out real uncertainty, uncertainty and only put in values that we can be certain of. So we know what the estimate is today. You know, there's uncertainty whether it could, you know, what the market's going to be when the project gets bid. And so that's why we are kind of fluctuating the capital cost. But then, again, on the interest rates, you know, we're trying to be conservative on the utility rates, trying to be conservative, so.
Gus, I think the, the, the key to take away from this is there's a million different outcomes for all of these things, right? You know, and we don't know all of them. What we did try to do is present options, but you know, as, as even Alec pointed out that, you know, let's say we took the worst case scenario on the cost side and the worst case scenario on the savings side, you know, are we still seeing a benefit? And then, you know, so what that actual benefit is and which one is going to be more than the others? There's so many different pieces that play into that, that we can come up with a bazillion different.
I understand that, but, but none, right, but nonetheless, you guys are at one particular spot. So I'm trying to understand the path that got you there and the path that didn't get you to some other place. I'm not arguing on a position, just making sure I understand it.
Yep.
But while, while you're talking, Mike, let me just ask, I'll jump to what's probably, I guess, maybe policy, kind of that with third category question. A couple of months ago, when this first came up and we were talking, my sense of your view at that point in time was that it might not be feasible for us to actually pursue net zero, that it seemed in your experience, for what you've been seeing, net zero ready was the more likely feasible option. If, if to, to Mike's point, he, Mike Marcucci's point here, what we're dealing with is a one and a half million dollar incremental cost. I think that's down at least a million dollars from the number I heard you throw out on what this might cost. In, as you are looking at it now, do you now, are you now saying net zero does seem feasible? And net zero ready does not seem to be a necessary, and I, if I'm putting on this, if I'm putting you on the spot, I'll apologize, but
That's all right.
Net zero ready does not appear to be an important fallback option to be considering.
Sure. So let me, let me walk you through my thought process through all of this because admittedly, my, my position, my opinions have changed as a part of this process. So I'm a natural skeptic, Gus, as you know, and, and, you know, when I originally saw the, the whole Sandin approach to this, you know, I had some doubts, you know, because a lot of times, you know, if, if people can make numbers out to be whatever they want them to be, if you, to, to come to whatever conclusion you want them to, if, if you put in the right inputs. But going through this analysis in a different, and taking at it from a different perspective and looking at it as a, as a cash flow decision, you know, a benefit versus cost. And really digging into the numbers. And I'm happy to, to share with you, and I think Megan and Kate can walk you through the extensive spreadsheets, which I know you're a fan of, that, that outline that generated all this. And it's been really hard to simplify this because it's such a complicated issue. And I've pushed and pushed to, you know, try to take out things that are what I would consider to be speculative. You know, Mark Sandin's analysis included things like health benefits that have to do with carbon emissions and all these other things that, that are speculation. And we really don't know what the actual savings are, so we just took them out. So there are potentially other savings that aren't even accounted for here. So, and then, so in looking at it, when, you know, from an original perspective of, of, you know, the old way of looking at these decisions had, had more to do with just a simple straight payback. Like when will, when will the system pay for itself in, in savings? And it's kind of just a short sighted way, what I learned, and, and trust me, I'm the dinosaur who believed in it originally. You know, what I learned was that it is kind of a short sighted way to look at these decisions. And really what we're looking at and asking for your guidance on is, you know, we're to, to make a, a million and a half dollar jump on costs, you know, in the grand scheme of things, you're right, it's, it's nominal in, in terms of the overall project size and, and the overall cost for the project over a thirty year period. However, you know, it's, it's a sensitive time for people in terms of cost. And I want to make sure that we're making decisions that are good long-term decisions. You know, I've, I've always preached that as, as chair of the building committee, the permanent building committee as well, is, you know, we build buildings that have to last a minimum of fifty years, you know, we really can't be looking at short-term issues and, and as such, we have to make our best judgment about what's going to occur over those decades. And be wise about the decisions and the systems we put into it. So I will readily admit that my position has changed. And what I realized also is that the PPA is a far more powerful tool than, than I have even understood. Because what it does is allows the town to realize so much of these savings without any additional cost to the town, without any additional upfront cost. And I think that's a powerful tool that can help achieve not only just financial savings, but obviously is something that will benefit the climate and, and the environment in general and, and give us a sustainable building that'll last us fifty years.
Well, then let me, let me just without, I think I've got most of the important question on the technical side. So let me actually switch a little bit to what may be more editorial on the financial side, given what you just said. My, first off, Mike, you and I have had several conversations about my view about the total cost of this school.
Yep.
That view has not changed.
Yeah, I understand.
The mere fact that we have a great idea that's justified, it's like if this is a feature we need to build in and it's a cost that needs to be added, then my question is what less important features would we take out? That's, that's just me speaking. However, when Mark Sandin came and presented to the board of selectmen and laid out an, an actual example of Lexington being able to do this at no net cost to the town, along with that one, the, the one little piece around the heat pumps being, you know, financed and, and funded through the savings. I was on board because basically, yes, if we can do this kind of a thing and we can do this kind of a thing without adding cost to the school, to, to the cost of the school, why wouldn't we do it? And then you have all those other benefits that we were talking about, insulating ourselves from electric cost. So in terms of philosophical receptivity to doing this, I'm on board. Financial re- receptivity, first off, I'm glad that we're arguing over one and a half million dollars and not some bigger number. But my view is if Lexington can do it, I see no reason why we can't. The one question I had on the cost savings, like this chart that's up here, if I'm following this, we're, we're catching the AEC revenue, we're catching the solar savings, we're, we're catching peak demand savings.
Some, yeah.
But so the one piece that's missing in this picture, and I don't think it's a huge piece, but the piece that's missing in the picture around incentives is the Eversource incentive if we achieve the level.
That's factored into.
I'm trying to figure out relative to Lexington. Say again?
It's factored into the capital cost, so it's, it only affects the, the geothermal system, right? Because none of the other systems would achieve that additional incentive. So basically it was netted out. So if, if
Okay.
Going, going from, you know, option one to option three sees an increase in the incentive, but it also an increase in the cost that is, it, it netted it out, you know.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
So, so.
I don't know if I'm explaining it right.
Yeah, let me, let me put the point, let me put the point in a simpler way. There's nothing in the Lexington picture that we saw when Mark Sandin came that's missing from this picture, except for the battery stuff.
There, there is. As I mentioned, we took out, we took out the health benefit because to me it's too speculative. Kate, do you want to elaborate on any other stuff?
No, I'm just talking over you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, and my question is more mercenary than the health benefit anyway, so.
There were.
I'm looking just, I'm just trying to get the.
There were a couple of other ways that the calculations were done in the Sandin analysis that we felt were not conservative enough. And so we took out some of those reductions.
Okay.
So, and, and Gus, I'm happy, I'm happy to talk with Mark. I don't know if, if, if what he says is true, that, that they were able to have someone else or something else, somewhat of other savings pay for that increase. What, what I can tell you is that, you know, we have a great design team and, and professional estimators that look at this and they look at the system and they say it costs more. And so I'm not exactly clear on, on how they were able to put in a more expensive system without actually paying upfront capital cost for it. So I, I'm happy to have that discussion with him, but regardless, you know, we've taken a much more conservative approach and it's still seeing a net benefit.
So, which, which, A, I appreciate the conservative approach. First off, the comment that he made was the only reason it worked in Lexington at no net cost to the town was because of the batteries. And had they tried to do this two years earlier, when the battery technology was not there, they wouldn't have been able to make it work the way they presented. So at least in terms of understanding Lexington, I'm glad you're being more conservative in some of the projections. But I think, Kate, you said that if we did have batteries, the solar savings would double. And then all of this probably as, as a, as a net added cost to the town for this project, it probably goes away. I'm not arguing for batteries per se. I guess my question, my expectation that we ought to be able to find a way to do this at no net added cost to the town, several years beyond in technology development from when Lexington figured out how to do it, even if they were aggressive in their projections, I'm saying seems to me we ought to be able to do that. So I, I am still looking for that. But it also raises a question for me, if, if, if we get on board with this concept, and it may be that at this point in the process, you don't have everything nailed down. So I'm not trying to, I don't need a hundred percent answer right now, even though where I come out. But it seems to me if we get on board with this answer, there does need to be an effort that's thoughtful about what this, you know, thinking strategically about what this design needs to be. And at least from what we learned from Mark Sandin, something in here in order to really deliver the kind of benefits that would probably be required to have this pay for itself would include the batteries. So that's me talking away on my technical.
Um, you know, we would definitely pursue all avenues that would increase the, the amount of the savings. And I think batteries are an important part of that. You know, the, the, the question is how do we go about that? And, and we, we unfortunately, when we appropriated money for this study, just, you know, probably should have asked for more because we, we've, you know, committed the funds that we have available and, and some of these additional analyses do require some additional consulting fees. You know, Eversource has been helpful in, in getting us to this point because they're in it with us in regards to contributing to the, the energy modeling that's been done to date. But, and, and then if there's a way we can do it without any consulting fees, and then maybe we'll try to find that option. Or as I mentioned, there may be some grants available through other avenues. So we'll explore every option that, that will help save money on this.
And to, okay, just a quick, a quick side update for that. My business is, Eversource is one of our clients, and I did talk to our contact over there who's putting me in touch with the right people to get, you know, so maybe some more examples or case studies or other, you know, other data that we can look at for the battery component prior to engaging in a, in a, you know, consulting arena with someone who would help narrow or, you know, hammer out those numbers. So that was just this afternoon that I had that discussion. So I'm hoping to get some more information probably next week on, you know, maybe some other sources of data that we could refine these numbers a little bit with, at least as a first step, but it's a good question, though.
So I get, I think you, I've got my questions answered at, at this early point. If it's helpful to hear a preliminary reaction first, I like the concept. I like what we're trying to do. You know my expectations around cost. I think that's achievable. Don't need to know exactly how we would do it now. So when we get to exactly what it is you're asking from the selectman, at least for me, the wind is blowing in the right direction, my, my thinking.
Thanks, Gus. Any other questions?
I mean, like, you're looking for a decision from us in the near term.
Yes, you know, if, if, if there, if we've answered all your questions tonight, you know, then, and, and you're willing to move on it at your next meeting, I think it's Tuesday, then the sooner the better because that gives gives Arrow Street the ability to move forward with the design of the actual option. As opposed to, you know, waiting an additional week till April sixth at that meeting. So so I, I think it's, it's a matter of what you're comfortable with. If you need certain things clarified before you make a decision and we need a little bit more time to do that, then maybe we put it on your agenda for the sixth. Otherwise, if we've answered all your questions and you're, you're comfortable taking a position, then, you know, that could be the Tuesday meeting.
And like, Mike, I'm assuming that the building committee is, is recommending this course of action first. And secondly, that that position, if we take it, doesn't come with a blank check.
Uh, no, certainly nothing comes with a blank check, Gus. You know, we, we haven't as a committee formally taken a position to recommend it. We're seeing it air for the, for tonight. You know, if, if you want us to vote, to vote that as a recommendation, you know, I guess we would have to, we, we didn't post that on our agenda tonight. You know, typically, you know, when, when I, the reason why I didn't put this as a recommendation from the SBC is because there's some things here that aren't just about logistics and, and what's best for building a building. There's things here that, that have to do with energy policy. And quite frankly, there's a lot of towns that, that have a much more set energy policy about net zero for their buildings than, than Medfield does. And then, of course, there's some that, that are on the opposite side of it. However, without a clear policy in town in regards to energy, I wasn't comfortable with the SBC making a decision that I felt was related to town policy about energy. So that's why I was seeking guidance from the selectmen to point us in the right direction here.
So Mike, again, speaking as one selectman, my, my view here is not driven by a policy decision around some firm commitment by the town to achieve some goal that some people would like to see us achieve. Speaking personally, it is driven by a sensitivity and a personal desire to make sure that our environment stays as near as good as we can possibly make it for future generations as we possibly can, coupled with a desire to make sure that those things we do are cost effective. So at least speaking personally, I, when I, when I say, I don't know, Pete, Mike, I guess we can talk about this, but it's not so much that I'd need a firm vote of the committee before I would be willing to do something, but I would like to know that we are getting firm technical advice from the committee that this makes sense for the school and for the town on both environmental and economic grounds. As opposed to, let's throw it to the selectmen and see what they want to do with it. That, that I would not feel comfortable doing. So I'd like to know that we're, we're on a technical basis. Where, you know, we're not freewheeling it. And then I guess we can worry about the economic side of it. That makes sense.
So I understood this presentation is indicating that it doesn't make economic sense. And so that, and I think that it makes good policy sense for the town to, to try to build net zero buildings as well, given, given our climate issues. And so that for me, I, I think that it makes sense to go forward with the net zero.
Well, I guess right now the question is simply, do we need, do we want something more formal from the building committee? I'm neutral either way. If you, if you did have the vote, that would be fine. I don't necessarily, given what, what's come out here, don't necessarily, I guess, need that. I don't know. Mike, what do you think?
I don't know that we need a vote on it. I, I guess obviously a ton of technical work has gone into this. And so I think in terms of technical advice, we've gotten it. If any of the other committee members, I don't want to say has a dissenting view, but if any of the committee members who hasn't asked
I don't want to say has a dissenting view, but if any of the committee members who hasn't asked a question, has questions to ask or concerns about the way this is laid out, I think between the questions that the three of us have asked, we've clarified our understanding of the facts as best we can grasp them. And so to the extent that other SBC members who think that the description of the fact incorrect or the analysis is wrong, or there's other technical points we should take into account. I don't know that I need a vote. I think Mike Quinlan has been pretty clear that he thinks this is ultimately something he's looking for direction from the selectmen on. So I, I haven't expected that the school building committee was going to take a vote on this particular issue. I did expect that the committee would do what it has done, which is really dig into the details on this with people who have genuine expertise in this area to tee up, to tee up the question at a level of simplicity that the three of us can understand.
Oh, I mean,
It took several months.
If any, if any of the SBC would want to make any comments either, um, in support or in dissent, um, certainly would welcome that. Or if there's questions from the SBC, I've, I've asked for a bunch of questions, but, uh, I sometimes have to draw them out of people.
I guess the only other question I'd have, Mike, is are we definitely doing solar? Because all, most of the savings we talked about are in solar savings. So is that?
I, I think, I think what this analysis personally, this is just my opinion. I think what this shows us is that the only way that this makes sense is if we do do solar as a, as a PPA.
Okay.
And, and I mean, you know, we'll explore the options, you know, as Alec mentioned about hybrid or, or, or owner. So we can make sure we do our due diligence on that. And, um, but I, I, I think you can see just from the slide, just the, the overwhelming savings comes when you're generating your own electricity or severely discounted electricity on the site.
Is the solar just on the roof?
Uh, yes, um, the, um, Kate, did, I know it's definitely with the geothermal, the,
Yeah, with the geothermal, um, we definitely think it would be on the roof, the VRF option. You might need a smaller rate that's not on the roof. But we would have to do the full analysis to, to do that. You might need a small rate over a small area of parking or something like that, which PPAs can also, um, cover that cost.
So there's actually an opportunity to do a larger solar array than if we did canopies over the parking as well.
Yeah, this could be a triple positive. It's, you know, you have a lot of parking. So there, there's obviously opportunity to have a lot more solar than, than you need just to hit the net zero.
Yeah.
And as we talked about earlier, PPAs, they like to put more and you get better rates. They like to build more. So it's something we'll explore. As an SBC member, I would just like to affirm that I am in favor of, um, a net zero building. And I appreciate all the analysis that went into this and for me personally to, um, um, to be, to be a good steward is, is to do the, the right thing. And, and for me, that, that would be my preference. So thank you to all who have contributed to this.
Yeah, I'll echo, uh, Anna May's. This presentation was very, um, very in-depth and I learned a lot from it and it's, um, and it's a lot of work, you know, to, to balance it out, to make a useful building and put the right technology in place. You know, forward-thinking technology as well, right? So that it's not aged out by the time. Uh, it's stuff that we can keep up to date, um, to yield better return, uh, as time moves on as well. So that's the other thing that, uh, I liked about it. Um, so I echo Anna May's approach as well. I'm in favor of a net zero building.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome anytime, Gus. Um, uh, I'm glad, uh, I'm glad you found this helpful. Um, I, I want to personally thank, um, Megan, Alec, Tom Herb and the members of the sustainability subcommittee, uh, also new member, uh, Jason Uzell, and, and Kate and, and her team, like there's, there's a significant amount of work here that's been put in, in a rather, rather short period of time. So I really do appreciate that. Um, so, um, uh, Pete, Mike, Gus, um, if you're okay with it, I'll have Christine add a sort of formal, uh, vote on this to your, uh, Tuesday meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Do you need us any longer?
Um, not unless you want to. I know it's been a long,
Can we have a, a motion then to adjourn the select board meeting? Yes, I'll move to adjourn the, well, adjourn the meeting for the two of you. You can't do anything without us.
I think you have to walk outside of your house and come back in again. Did you make a motion that I,
I did, yes.
I seconded, okay.
Peterson? Yes. Murvy?
Yes.
And Mark Kuci votes no on this motion. Thank you, everybody. Presentation.
Are we going on to other agenda items?
We are, yes. I know it's late, but yeah. Um, I know it's, it's late. We've been through, um, you know, certainly two hours. I think we had a few other things, uh, we wanted to touch on. Do, 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 hold on one second here. Christine, you have your hand up?
Oh, not intentionally.
Okay, just making sure. All right, I gotta lower your hand. All right. Yeah, can, can we jump back to the agenda? Uh, and,
Tina, are you gonna?
So what we had on the agenda, uh, we're going to jump down to, to the traffic study update. And then after that, take a look at some of the landscaping work that's been done. That was the plan. The, the actual agenda was posted prior to our working group meeting on Monday. So some of these, uh, items were actually slimmed down a little bit, uh, for tonight, realizing that the sustainability would take a long time.
So I guess I would, uh, ask the SBC if, um, if maybe they could spare another half an hour to get through a couple of these things. Anybody object? Okay, speak, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Go right ahead.
All right, um, so Lynn, do you want to, uh, or Tina rather?
Tina, yeah, if you want to, um, take over from where you were on the slide deck.
I'm gonna take the opportunity to say.
Oh, yeah, um, don't, don't feel like you need to stick around Megan or Alec. Um, I appreciate your time.
I don't think Alec feels like he needs to stick around. I want to hear all about the traffic in my neighborhood.
Okay, everyone can see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, great. I'm just gonna, um, sorry. Trying to make it as big as possible. Okay. Um, we wanted to just give a traffic update. Um, it should be pretty straightforward. Um, it's just mainly, um, documenting the discussion and some of the decisions that was, um, discussed from the last school building committee meeting. And we're just bringing this up again, that we looked more, looked at specifically, um, number one, two, and number four as part of the mitigation for this project. And this is an updated, um, site diagram that shows what we'd like to proceed with for the school. And I'll start with the intersection where we are going to look at, um, we're going to incorporate stop sign and always stop for the intersection. And, um, it was discussed that maybe later on down the road, we'll see how effective that is. Um, and it'll be observed. But in terms of cost, um, this may be the best, um, option, uh, for the time being with the new school and, and the anticipated traffic that would be coming through this intersection. The other is as I sort of move from, from left to right is incorporating, um, signage, um, for no entry during peak times of, um, morning and afternoon uh, onto Knollwood Road, Road and Cross Street.
And that could say, you know, residents, residents only or something like that, not, you know, so just, just so, just so it's clear for the public that, you know, if somebody lives on Knollwood, that I don't think we'd be looking to prevent them from getting to their house.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. Um, and then as we continue to move, um, on Elm Street towards the school, school zone signage will be posted. Um, and then the other mitigation, um, strategy would be to, sorry?
Tina, one thing, um, wouldn't we want to also do Steven Lane for the, you know, no entry during certain hours?
It, it, it can include Steven Lane, um, if that was a concern. Sorry, I don't have the map extending outward. But it can. I know that it was, it was voiced, um, that Knollwood and Croft had, um, the biggest concern, but Steven Lane can be included if you think that makes sense.
I, I mean, I, I think it does, but we can, um, bring it back to the, the neighborhood and see what their thoughts are on it.
Um, and, and that's a good point.
I was going to say, Mike, for, for pricing purposes, we can add a sign and yeah. I'm not assuming that's going to break our budget.
No.
Yep. Um, I think I started to say that, um, part of the mitigation strategy is to also re-stripe Elm Street from South Street intersection down to the school. So basically the dotted green line, we would re-stripe it so that we would have wider shoulders. And so the, the travel width, um, um, ends up being a little bit more narrow, um, but still safe. But that's, um, sort of a, a traffic flowing strategy, um, that's commonly used. And the other strategy noted here, um, that also follows the green dotted line is to improve the existing sidewalks that are along Elm Street on the north side of Elm Street, that is. So we're not installing new sidewalks, but we're making improvements to them. For instance, probably fixing the, the curb cuts, um, so they need accessibility. Adding crosswalks, um, where they may not exist currently. Um, and that may be simply just being able to stripe them and having crosswalk signage. Um, so that's clear to both pedestrians and to cars where the cross, crosswalks are. Um, and that's, that's basically the, the areas, um, and the strategies that we're going to incorporate as part of the school project. Any questions?
None for me.
Nope. Okay, great. So with that, I am going, oh, this was, I, I forgot about this. There was a question from a couple of weeks ago about the intersection and how the stop signs may relate to, to the, uh, train tracks.
Yeah.
And, um, so this was, we had the traffic engineers take a look at this. From, from their analysis, they don't see it being an issue. There isn't a distance issue. Um, and they said that this is very common. Um, what they suggest is to stripe the, the road. Um, so there's a do not block area. So, um, so if cars do get backed up from the stop sign, then they know not to drive over that do not block area. So if in the case that, um, the arms come down for a train to come through, um, that that area is clear. Any questions about this?
Wouldn't, wouldn't we want that to span all the way across, not just the northbound lane?
Yeah, um, it, it would. I mean, I think they were more concerned about that because that's where the cars would stack up. But I think you're right. Usually it's the whole width of the road. And we can clarify with the traffic engineer about that.
I don't see what the downside would be to that.
Correct. Um, do you sometimes see cars that may back up to this intersection going south?
No, because right now there's no stop sign.
You, right. I mean, there's no stop sign.
But if, if, if the, if the train's coming through and the arms are down, it'll back up in both directions. So I guess the point being that, you know, um, even though let's say that stop sign on the southbound side, you know, somebody's going through there and then the arms come down and people are still rolling through. We, we just don't want it stacking up too far. So I, I guess unless there's a strong reason not to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know why we wouldn't just have that do not block the box, uh, going all the way across.
Okay, yeah, yeah, make, it makes sense. And we could double check with the traffic engineers, um, about this. If there's any, anything wrong with, um, painting it and not, or versus not painting it. Um, okay, great. And so from here, um, we're actually going to talk about site and landscape and we have, um, Tara Inc., um, that's in the participants, I believe.
I think Jade's here, yeah.
Okay, great. Jade, I'm gonna, if you want, I can remain sharing the screen or I could turn it over to you if it's easier for you to use your cursor to point around.
Uh, sure, Tina, let's, let's try that.
Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing and then Jade's going to take over.
How's that? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Tina. Hello, everyone. We will briefly just, uh, we'll talk about where the overall concept for the landscape is this evening. Uh, it is important to note that where we are right now, it's really more about understanding and making sure we're getting the program elements into this project that everybody would like to see incorporated into the final design. Uh, we have certainly not begun to do any fine detailing or design that will come later on when the driveways and the parking lots and the building and everything really begins to sit. And we make sure we have the circulation, the fire emergency vehicular access where we need. Once we have all of that in line, uh, probably during the next phase of design development, that's when we'll start to get into the real nitty gritty of the detail of these sites. So what we were hoping to hear from the group tonight, I will generally, I'll walk through the overall, uh, the circulation and programs of the site. And what I would really love to appreciate, what I'd really love to hear is just the general feedback. You know, we love the element. We can't stand that element. This, this works, this doesn't work. We think this should be shifted. Uh, that type of feedback would be super helpful as we move forward. So beginning on Elm Street, uh, you can see right now we're looking at, and I know there's been a lot of conversation about bus and auto traffic, but right now my understanding is we're looking at having the buses come in this area with a drop off and the passenger vehicles in this area with a drop off in this zone. And as you can see, the parking lot, this parking lot on the east side of the property has shifted down a little bit. And this parking lot has been flipped, so it's in more of a northeast, southwest orientation. Um, and what we do like about this is the loading is a little more tucked away. Um, obviously auto turn studies will have to be completed to make sure the, the loading vehicles can come in and maneuver, um, as needed. But right now, it, it, it doesn't put the loading area, it's such a presence with the front of the building. And we've also been able to put some accessible parking in this zone, which will allow for more direct access to the main entry of the building in addition to access to this back daycare zone. Um, moving back up to this front part of the site, we understand that we are looking at this general area as a rain garden slash detention area to help with stormwater mitigation. Uh, and we will be working closely with civil to understand what the overall volumes need to be of this area. And this was one of those examples of we, we understand that there are some people who might say just leave it as a detention area. It is just open space to be viewed and we totally understand that. Uh, but of course, our job as the landscape architect is to look at your site and try to understand how we can maximize the usable space throughout your site in addition to the overall in addition to the overall program experience of the children. So we are showing right now conceptually a possibility, the possibility of having a crosswalk in this zone. And perhaps eventually a crosswalk in this zone. So that during the middle of the day, when we don't have the bus and vehicular traffic, if a science teacher or an art teacher wanted to bring a class out here, we could have just very simple little amphitheater type seating, very simple cast in place concrete slabs and stone boulders, so the classes can come out here, observe butterfly houses. And we're envisioning, when we say rain garden, we're not talking about your typical rain garden that is super messy. Nobody upkeeps, but a very simple plane of a New England wet mix. So it can survive, those little grass seeds can survive having their feet wet, but it doesn't require heavy maintenance. We do understand that maintenance is a key issue for these public schools. So wherever we see these large open areas, we're really looking at a mix of larger growing grasses that are mown perhaps two or three times a year. And really just having the manicured cut lawn where necessary for visibility and safety. As you can see, on the north side of the existing Wheelock School, the drop off and parking lot has been streamlined a little bit. And in this, at this moment, we also know that Arrow Street will have conversations with police and fire. Because as I mentioned, we all know that the emergency vehicular access will ultimately be a huge driving factor in this project. But right now, we are hoping that the fire and police team members will allow for access in this zone from Elm Street through here, around south side of the building, and then back out. But again, that needs to be confirmed. We're hopeful that that will work because we are ideally hoping to maintain this central zone between the new school and the existing school so that we can really create a quaint area where we can have your relocated victory garden. We understand the existing map building is to remain. We're hoping to have an outdoor courtyard area in this zone. And we also understand that in this area, there are existing transformers that may or may not be able to be relocated. So we're hoping, depending upon what fire and police say, we're hoping that we don't have to run an emergency vehicle lane through this area, but we will see. Right now, with regard to accessibility, as you can see off of this bus drop off, we have several just clear sidewalks, both to the existing school and to the new school from the bus drop off and from the existing building, so that we have clear access points and transparency between the two schools. And then we have this. What we're, we've heard, we've heard through the team that this concept of a walking classroom has been popular, which admittedly I had not heard of this before, so we're really excited about this. But we are right now proposing the introduction of a walking loop, which is illustrated by this orange dotted line. Generally in this area, and again, this has not been designed, but we're working around the existing softball field and the existing swing area. And we're trying to use this potential emergency vehicular path to create a safe walking zone where your children can walk during the day safely. It is away from the roadways, the parking lots, and really tucked away in this zone so that we have we have that interface between the schools and then your natural resources in this area. And then continuing to the south of the building, this is where, of course, we have cafeteria and the really active zones within the school. And this is where we would have more formal outdoor dining and play areas. And we have heard that the existing Wheelock Playground will be in this, it is in this location to remain. And we have heard that it is preferred that we have a separate playground for the new school, which is why we're generally proposing it in this area with an associated basketball court. So just very quickly, these are some character images for the the general zones that we're reviewing or considering right now. Buffer zones, so very simple mature street tree deciduous tree plantings. We understand that Medfield is known for their rhododendrons, so we'll be certain to have those throughout the property. Uh, open play areas, we understand we're keeping these existing softball fields to remain, and we are proposing perhaps a new field in this location. Again, in tandem, intended with the existing fields on the east side of the site, which would also have nice accessibility with this rotated surface parking lot. For the more active playground area, this type of element, when we get into design development, we are hoping to have the opportunity to work with a playground committee. This will be really important to understand the conversations with regard to what type of play equipment is your town interested in having. There, you can imagine, there's an infinite, there are an infinite number of possibilities. We tend to offer up natural type play, traditional type play, contemporary type play, or mixture of the three. But that's something that when we really get into the design detail, that will be very important to have consensus with a team. And then, of course, the main entry arrival, which we have, we really appreciate the way Arrow Street has bookended the building here so that when you enter your site, this new Medfield Elementary School is really going to have a presence. And this, again, when the drop off areas and roadways really start to settle, this front entry courtyard is going to be super important. And so this is just some general character imagery about how we hope to incorporate safe seating, viewing, waiting areas, bicycle zones, sight lighting, et cetera. And then again, when we, when I was talking about this area with the lower maintenance, when we talk about rain gardens, we're not talking about messy unkempt plantings. But really using a mix, just a very simple seed mix that doesn't have to be mown more than two or three times a year, and then these more articulated mown paths. And in this area, as you can see in this image, boulders, just simple areas where kiddos can sit for a science or an art class. Outdoor classrooms are going to be, we think the outdoor classrooms will be important, but again, that's further conversation with the school. Just getting the kids outside, whether it's a little ant farm, butterfly houses, birdhouses, having seating opportunities, perhaps outdoor chalkboard so that the teachers can get their kids outside wherever possible. And if appropriate, just having informational signage here and there so that the kids just have that constant visual and educational interface between what they're viewing. And then, of course, you're all familiar with your victory garden, which is another element we're very excited about. This is unique to your school. So we look forward to understanding, you know, is this the correct location? What type of accessibility, vehicular and pedestrian accessibility will you need? How how large do you want it, et cetera? And then finally, in this courtyard area plaza, again, opportunities for accessibility everywhere, that's a given, but seating, outdoor seating, little just kind of off the beaten path for informal classroom opportunities. And with that, I will open this for any questions.
Any questions from the SBC or comments?
Like the walking classroom.
Yeah, me too. I think that's a great idea.
And it's cool. Yeah.
So part of, part of standard design for schools from a safety perspective is is having accessibility on all sides of the building for police and fire, public safety, as Jade sort of alluded to. So there's a certain amount that we'll need to loop around and and even some paved areas between the buildings. So we'll review that with the with the chiefs. But that does create an opportunity for sort of that that track type walking classroom. I think it's a great idea. Anyone else have any thoughts? Good, bad, or ugly?
I think it's fantastic. Thank you very much, Jade. It's it's great to see it coming more and more alive. So thank you.
So I would also add, just draw your attention. Obviously, there was some some reconfiguration of the parking, which I think has been an improvement. Also a reduction from some of the other site plans that we'd seen previously. I do personally really like the simplification of the drop off in front of Wheelock. I think that'll help out a lot. Just to sort of simplify that drop off process. And, you know, we're we're, we still need to do a little exploration on the existing map building, but it is shown in its current location there. You know, we may explore moving that, but, you know, without sort of creating any more additional costs that we're trying to avoid. So but so that is shown still in its current location.
Yeah, Mike, I'm, when I look at this, I know it's a four or five configuration, but it it just strikes me that there is some benefit that comes to the two-three school by by being on this location. It just, you know, it 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 seems like there's going to be a real benefit for the second and third graders is, you know, that's going to come from this, at least my observation.
Yeah, I mean, the the design team really is trying to build in that relationship between the two buildings with, you know, functional space that that both schools could share. And then in addition, you know, things like the, you know, the stage and and some of the other things in the in the new school that the second and third graders could certainly utilize. And we know, we've talked about some of those synergies about being key to why we chose this site. Not just because of, you know, space constraints or some other things, but based on function and and educational benefit. So I agree, Bob. Any other thoughts from the SBC? All right, great job, Jade. Thank you. This is really, really coming together nicely.
Thank you.
So Lynn, I know we had some other things on the agenda, but we're kind of getting late. So I think what I would like to do is table those for our next meeting. And, you know, let these good people get some rest.
We agree.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mike, that's our our main agenda items. Certainly, it's it's gone on long enough from our standpoint as well.
We appreciate your patience. And poor Jade, she always gets in the back end of the meeting. Most of these days, we gotta put her up front so she doesn't have to sit through everything else. All right. So I I will open it up for a quick question and answer from the public. If there are any, please put it in the chat. But obviously, keep it brief if if at all possible. And, you know, we we've we've had a lot to cover tonight, so thanks for everybody's patience and sitting through all of this. All right, not seeing any questions. Give it just a second more. Okay. All right, not seeing any. I guess I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Leo Burnham. I didn't catch the second. Who was that? Jeff with the second. All right, Tom Erb.
Yes.
Walt Kincaid.
Yes.
Mike Weber.
Yes.
Jeff Marsden.
Yes.
And Ameo Shabrook.
Yes.
Leo Brown.
Yes.
Mike Markucci.
Yep.
And Mike Quinlan also votes yes. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all your patience tonight. It was a lot to get through, but it was very productive.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.